But they looked at the map, it was kind of off to the side.
Yeah.
And their clock is way down.
We're at seven.
Yep. That one's going down.
Good evening, I'd like you, I'd like to walk you into the Manistee City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 20th at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the quad.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heather, will you please take the roll call? Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Beaton.
Here.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Here.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Here.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Here.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Here.
City manager.
Here.
City attorney.
Here.
DPW director.
Here.
Planning and zoning administrator.
Here.
Police chief.
Here.
Fire chief.
Here.
City engineer.
Here.
Roll call complete. Thank you. Public hearings, we have none. Citizens comments on agenda-related items. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda-related items only. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor, limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Seeing none, consent agenda. All agenda items marked with an asterisk are the consent agenda and considered by the city manager to be routine matters. Prior to the approval of the consent agenda, any member of council may have an item from the consent agenda removed and taken up during the regular portion of the meeting. Consent agenda items include approval of minutes, payroll, invoices, consideration of text amendment to the zoning ordinance, notification regarding next study session, consideration of the Manistee Catholic Central Homecoming Parade. At this time, council could take action to approve the consent agenda as presented. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Heather, can you take the roll call when you're ready? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Under new business, consideration of a mutual aid agreement with Clare County. The Manistee City Police Department, in partnership with the Slay Bell Committee, has requested assistance from Clare County Mounted Division. Clare County will assist with police presence and crowd control on Saturday, December 3rd, 2022, during and after the Manistee Victorian Slay Bell Parade. The city attorney has reviewed and approved the agreement. At this time, council could take action to approve the Clare County mutual aid agreement.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Police chief, would you like to talk a little bit about it?
Yes, this is the Clare County. Crowd control is something we utilized for years. It's been very effective with crowd control, and we think it fits in really well with the spirit of the Victorian Slay Bell Parade. They do a great job. And we're very appreciative to have that resource available to us. So just to be clear, the utilization of this resource is for crowd control.
Okay. I'm looking forward to it, thank you. I think we're ready for roll call. Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Bachman.
Here.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of a resolution establishing authorized signatories for MERS contract and service credit purchase approvals. MERS revised its plan documents several years ago and now requires a resolution naming the positions at the city that are authorized to execute certain documents, such as service credit purchases. The resolution names the city manager or chief financial officer as officials authorized to sign these documents. At this time, council could take action to authorize a resolution establishing authorized signatories for MERS contract and service credit purchase approval. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you. Mr. Gamble, would you like to elaborate on this a little bit?
Um, so MERS changed the contracts so that they need, or they, they require that we have these signatories available. Basically, a defined benefit. A person in MERS can either purchase a set number of months, years, or they can tell MERS they have a certain amount of money to invest. Um, and then they're, and then MERS calculates the credit they can purchase with that amount of money. So, um, I think we've had only a few, we've had a couple of request quotes recently, but ultimately that's where it starts, quote, and then if they want to purchase, then we go through this. We've only had a few do that in the past, though, looking into it. And we've passed a resolution in 2004 that allows people to purchase time if they choose to.
Okay. Any questions from Thompson? One. Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you very much. Consideration of the sale of city-owned property Renaissance Lot, Lot 1. The city received an offer to purchase the parcel described as Renaissance Lot 1. This lot is part of the Renaissance Park located in Manistee Township. These lots are currently subject to restrictive covenants. The offer was $22,500. Use and employment detail, self-storage. Phase 1 would include mini warehouse units and would employ one to two people for management slash maintenance. Phase 2 would include a large warehouse with office and storage pods employing two to four people. At this time, council could take action to accept the offer with the inclusion of their proposed additional items, terms, I'm sorry, additional terms and conditions and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute all necessary closing documents. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion. Does this fulfill our agreement on the restrictive covenants, that this is enough employment for this property? I'm still confused about that. If you could answer that question, Mr. Saylor.
There, there's no bright line that tells us you have to have a certain number of employees. The purpose when this, when this park was first established was to, to retain and, and then also increase the number of manufacturing and industrial jobs in the community. So there's some question about, and warehousing is part of the potential uses of that property in the, that commercial use of that property. Question that has arisen is whether or not self-storage fits that definition. It appears, and I wasn't aware of this, that there is a phase 2 that it sounds like may be closer to what we're talking about. But the number of employees, it really doesn't define that. You know, again, consistent with the original intended use, it was to retain or increase the number of manufacturing or industrial employment. And so is this, does this fit this definition or not? I think it, it's, it's a pretty gray area. It's probably on the lower side, but again, these lots, we've had these lots ready for sale for 20 years, and it's only recently where we've seen some activity on it, so.
How many lots do we have left for sale over there?
I can get the list. I think we have about six left, and we have some of the larger ones, which I think should be held for major employer, given the, the space and also the access to utilities down there.
Yeah, that is kind of a small looking lot. Do anybody have any other questions?
Did the city manager recommend we make this sale or not make this sale, based on the issue with the intended use employees? What do you recommend?
I think, I think this one we could go ahead and do. I think it's kind of in that gray area, as Mr. Saylor stated. I think we do have to make sure, though, when, if, you know, if we do land and try to attract large manufacturers, the area, we have some of these available. But, you know, we've sold lots 10, 11, 12, and now we're looking at selling Lot 1. This one was listed for $23,850. We've sold the other two, lots 10, 11 for $22,500. So this kind of is in line with those, and I think, yeah, I think we can go ahead and, I would recommend we accept the offer. They are, obviously, there's a, with the restrictive covenants, you know, you could have, you know, there's like two-thirds majority needed to change the restrictive covenants, but, so just be aware of that to make any modifications. It's, it's a longer process.
Can we do that?
We, we looked at that, the, the issue with that in this current sale is the process I would estimate to be as long as a year to accomplish that, just because of the way the protective covenants read. But if we wanted to start that process, we certainly could for future reference, if that's what council desired.
Well, I'm just wondering, because one of the, one of the covenants in here, I can't get to the page fast enough, but, um, because it's, they're 20 years old, I mean, one of the covenants in here was, um, gotta get the city's permission to, to resell it. If, if all these lots are sold, what do we care if they sell it again? So if we remove some of those covenants on here, I think that they might sell faster. I mean, especially since, like, we've been sitting on them for 20 years and we're just now getting interest in them. So I think that might be something to look into, like, removing some of these restrictions so we can sell them, because, I mean, it's just like a house, like, if you're putting a restriction on, I gotta get prior authorization to sell a house, I'm not gonna buy that house. So, I mean, for this one, it's fine, but I think, I think that's something we need to look into, removing some of these restrictions, just so we can sell these lots and stop sitting on them for so long.
I have some questions, and I, you know, have we seen a site plan at all? Are they, are they going to have an entrance and exit on Pine Creek and on 55? How would they plan the latest?
So they're gonna go through site plan approval through Manistee Township, and they have zoning, and it's allowed by their zoning, and it does, does trouble. No, we haven't seen a site plan yet. This would be the first step, and I think the offer's contingent on them passing.
Okay.
Zoning.
My, my recollection is the protective covenants do not allow any of the lots to access the Renaissance Park via directly M55.
Okay. So it will be in the, so long as there's a, you know, a condition on there that says it's depended on, you know, site approval with Manistee Township? That's all I was worried about, because somebody has to look at a, a site plan for it.
The, the city also, right now, they have to, to submit to Katie their, their plan as well.
Okay. Okay.
Do, do we need another self-storage? Is there a feasibility, feasibility study done on that? Do we need another self-storage? Should they?
Um, I would assume they probably looked into this for wanting to purchase and build there, but the city hasn't done one, and I know from my experience trying to find some storage up here, when I was moving, it was, it was hard to find, so.
I will make the motion soon. Sorry, go ahead. Do you think they'll have any outside storage? I'm sure people have difficulties storing RVs and boats and that kind of thing. Do you think it's, they're gonna put that kind of stuff out there?
Based on the description, I don't see that, but I guess it's possible.
Well, I guess it'll be up to the Manistee Township to determine if there's gonna be a fence around it and et cetera, et cetera, and what they can do site-wise. All right, anybody else? Ready to take a vote? Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Consideration of applications to boards and commissions. The city clerk has taken action to advertise vacancies on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, the Compensation Commission, the Harbor Commission, the Pay Commission, and the Tree Commission. Mayoral and manage, manager appointments require a motion second and council voted support. Nominations for council appointments do not require a second. After nominations are, after all nominations are made, council votes on the nominees until one nominee receives a majority vote. The following applications have been received. For the Pay Commission, two vacancies, terms ending 20, 12/31/23. Applicants must be Manistee County residents. Purpose: oversees operation of the Manistee Public Access. Council appointment. I'd like to appoint Andrea DeYoung, 377th Street. All right. Any discussion?
No.
I think we're ready to take a vote, then. Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski.
Yes.
Councilmember Martin Poniac.
Yes.
Nomination approved. Thank you. Noticees, communications, and announcements. A report from the planning is, from Planning and Zoning and the Planning Commission. A regular part of each council meeting is a report from a cooperating agency, organization, organization or department. At this time, Mike Sacola and Ms. Katie Mel will report on the activities of planning and zoning, respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities. And at this time, Mark Whitliff will also report on the activities of the Planning Commission and request, and respond to any questions the council may have regarding their activities.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Mark Whitliff, Chair of the Planning Commission. Planning Commission, what we do, duties requirement outlined by the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act and the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. Prepare planning zoning ordinance, excuse me, zoning ordinances. Make recommendations to city council for master plan adoptions. Make recommendations to city council on zoning ordinances and MAP amendments. Review development proposals, both private and public. Who are we? We have Roger Yoder, our senior planning member, Marlene McBride, the secretary, Shelly Roberto, Michael Shemansky, Pam Weiner, Bob Silvinsky, the vice chair, and myself, chair. So I just want to say something about the planners, that every year, each planning member goes through six hours of training or more to keep their credits up for citizen, master citizen planner certificates. They do, again, they do this on their own at night or during the day, so my hat's off to them. They're one of the hardest working commissions that we have in the city, so. And at that point, I'll turn it over to Katie.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Katie Mel. I am the zoning administrator for the city, and I also have my department director here, Mike Sacola, if you guys do have any questions for him. But I felt like I could get up here and do this presentation for you guys tonight. So yes, we had Mark go through kind of the role of the Planning Commission and our current Planning Commission members, and now we're on to what does the planning department do? So we are contracted to administer the zoning ordinance and some other approval processes for permitting within the city, and we also have contracts with seven other communities within the county. So this entails, you know, answering questions to developers and property owners as it relates to zoning, or getting them, you know, to the right department if it's a question that I can't answer. And we also administer processes, like I said, other permitting processes that aren't necessarily covered in the zoning ordinance, like land divisions, combinations, temporary activity permits, things that affect a couple market study permit applications that I haven't facilitated myself personally, but those options are there. And lastly, we also staff the Historic District Commission and facilitate their permitting process, as well as the Zoning Board of Appeals, but that most definitely goes hand-in-hand with administering the zoning ordinance. And the Zoning Board of Appeals really only meet when requests are received as needed. So the city of Manistee is redevelopment-ready community, so we're RRC certified, and the purpose of this is to attract and retain businesses, plan for new investments and reinvestments, and identify assets and opportunities while focusing limited resources in our community. Some of the benefits of this are opening up the community for more grant opportunities, receiving technical assistance, and keeping current with the best practices for planning, zoning, and development. And then you will also see that I included a couple, a few memos and handouts for you tonight. This is part of our RRC certification, is reporting the yearly actions to city council. So there is, I apologize for not getting that to you sooner for review, but I am available for any questions you might have on that, and Mark has indicated as well that he's open to any questions you guys have. I know that I wasn't necessarily in this position for the entirety of those actions, so between the two of us, I'm sure that we can answer any questions you have on that, and you do not have to take any action on that. So that's just kind of part of the presentation here tonight, and that has the Planning Commission, HDC, and Zoning Board of Appeals' actions from January 2021 to present. Some of the main priorities of the planning department are first and foremost adhering to the master plan. We assist with ensuring the planning commission is adhering to that plan when making decisions on permit approvals and stipulations, as well as ensuring that any zoning amendments that go through are supported by the master plan and reflective of the future land use map that's contained within that plan. And we strive to make the permitting process as understandable and smooth as we can for developers and residential property owners. And lastly, researching new ideas and practices to make Manistee vibrant while also preserving its character. Okay, so the next three slides are kind of go, are gonna kind of go over the main duties of the Planning Commission, beginning with the master plan. So the Michigan Planning Enabling Act outlines the noticing and public hearing requirements for adopting a new master plan or amending the existing plan, and it is required by the Planning Enabling Act that this plan is reviewed at least every five years after adoption, but best practice recommends reviewing this annually. And the master plan should be reflective of the goals and vision for the community. Our plan contains goals and tasks that are to be accomplished by various departments within the city, and some of those are ongoing, some of them do have definitive, you know, deadlines for that goal, but again, they're all just kind of goals. We're not necessarily obligated to those things within those timeframes that we set for ourselves. Many master plans are utilized by a community for, you know, 15 to 20 years, as we know, sometimes development can take time, and as long as that plan stays current with the vision and goals of the community, really, it's, you know, applicable for, for as long as, as long as it is. So, yeah, the master plan is one of, one of the main duties, and I know I keep saying this, but it is very important that the zoning ordinance should always be reflective of the master plan, because the master plan is laying out how we project for our community, and the zoning is the current regulations. We want to make sure those, you know, go hand-in-hand at all times. Another one of the duties of the Planning Commission is reviewing zoning amendments and making recommendation to council. So there's two main types of amendments, being text amendments and MAP amendments, and we just have a couple examples of those on the screen. So that could be, you know, amending a use in a district, could be a dimensional standard that's amended, and then with MAP amendments, it could be changing the districts to an existing, the district boundaries to an existing district, or creating a new zoning district, like we saw with the marijuana overlay, with that use being introduced to the city. And lastly, we have permit approvals. So the main type of permit approval that goes to the Planning Commission is a special land use. That's outlined by our Michigan Acts that, you know, govern, govern our planning and zoning, and also there are some provisions of the zoning ordinance that allow for the Planning Commission to grant approval if certain conditions are present. A lot of times discretionary calls and zoning ordinances are left up to the Planning Commission as, you know, a board and not left up to the zoning administrator. Kind of takes the heat off the zoning administrator for some of those discretionary calls, so we do see that a little bit in the city's ordinance. Moving on to zoning enforcement, so we work with the police department to issue tickets for zoning violations, but our main goal is really to not issue a ticket, but to bring the property into compliance. Generally, we make contact with the property owner, giving them some specified amount of time, usually like 14 days, to contact us and discuss the suspected violation, and then we'll work with them to bring the property into compliance in a reasonable amount of time. If that's not accomplished, then obviously, at that point, a ticket is typically issued. And I will say that enforcement is complaint, is complaint-based, and we take, you know, complaints from our elected officials and staff, a lot of that, you know, channels through our elected officials and staff. And in 2022, we had 16 enforcement violations addressed. In my time, we have not really issued any tickets. I think we did issue kind of a fix-it ticket, and it was fixed quickly, but earlier in the year, I don't, I'm not sure if we really issued any zoning, zoning tickets. So this slide is, just to kind of give an idea of the context that the planning department receives, so in my other communities, I was kind of tracking voicemails. I started doing that in the city as well. Beyond tracking voicemails, it kind of becomes, you know, something that maybe takes more time than what it's worth, but I do think that this gives a very good estimate, a conservative estimate, of the contacts received from the city between April and August, so that's been my time in this position. And this does not account for emails, walk-ins, or calls answered by others in the office. So you'll see residential zoning calls, the highest quantity, and then we have commercial zoning, and in the other category, these are questions that maybe didn't have to do with zoning, so building permit questions, requests from elected officials, mostly things where I kind of had to direct people to other departments. So this is the permitting. I did a kind of side-by-side for 2021 and 2022. Obviously, we still have a few months left in 2022, but it appears that things are, you know, tracking similarly to how they were in 2021. Our land use permits, this encompasses all of our driveway, residential land use, commercial land use, and our special land use permits. Signs, that one is obvious. Our COA, those are the certificates of appropriateness issued by the Historic District Commission, and then our Zoning Board of Appeals cases. So those aren't necessarily permits, but those are the requests received by the Zoning Board of Appeals so far. And then I have the list of permit and application processes that we facilitate. As I mentioned earlier, some of these aren't directly related to zoning, but those are all available applications for property owners. Okay, so now we will jump into permit review. I did not include every single permit issued. You know, some of them are smaller residential land use. I did include new home construction for residential land use, and then all commercial land uses and special uses. So we'll kind of go through that, and if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, or I'm sure Mark could chime in as well, if, if I don't have an answer for you. So this is 1009 Manistee Street. This property owner received special land use approval for a marijuana grower facility. I don't believe any construction has really began, but this one was early on in 2022. 21 Cypress Street received, this is a permitted use, so it was just commercial land use approval for an eating and drinking establishment with a drive-through. We have 1260 Cornell Street, which was special land use approval. I know that this property owner was operating a daycare previously, but was looking to up her occupancy, so she went through the approval process for that. We have 440 River Street, which is for land use of an eating and drinking establishment. 292 Dunes Drive, this is a new home construction. I think that that's exciting, seeing, you know, these lots fill in, that's a beautiful area. And we have 259 River Street, the Milwaukee House. This is a commercial land use for an eating and drinking establishment. 71 Division Street was a commercial land use for an eating and drinking establishment, and then also, I know they're proposing to do tanning beds as well, so it'll be kind of coffee shop tanning salon there. 331 Monroe Street, this is another new home construction. And then we have the Lakeshore Hotel. Nothing was really modified with this approval, but we did have a permit transfer request, so that was a change in, you know, the developer name essentially, but I felt that was important to include since that went before the Planning Commission. And then the gateway is still under permitting process. I was hoping to have a permit issued by the time for this presentation, but I know this is an exciting project that everyone is, you know, ready to see, so I thought it was worth including this presentation. And the Planning Commission is always looking to foster relationships with other entities, including the DDA, the Historic District Commission, and the Visitors Bureau. Any questions?
Could you make those slides available to us that you just showed on the screen?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Katie, what are you doing with those storage cabinets up on 12th Street?
On 12th Street?
Have you contacted the owners? Like you said, you had trouble getting hold of them.
Yeah, I did make contact with the owners, myself and Nancy Baker, who administers our soil, our county soil erosion permits, did a site visit with the property owner. It was midsummer, so it's been a couple months now. They do have approval for phasing with that project. I know that, speaking with him, they're hoping, you know, by the end of the summer, they get all the grading and such done. I know that they have moved a lot of dirt over there, and everything will have to be secure per soil erosion as well before the winter. So yes, they're, they're working on it, and they have given us, I believe they've also provided to the police department a code so that staff can access the facility at any time, which was great. Yeah, and he gave me good, good contact information. So yes, contact has been made.
Okay, now they put up that block in the sand on the east side, because they said that, that could sink into Goodwood sometime. What about the back on the north side? I see they pushed a lot of sand over the bank. They put straw or something on top of it.
Yeah.
Isn't that a lot of, I mean, one guy was up here told us there was a lot of soft sand that could cause quite a wash.
Yeah, and, and we have our soil erosion officer, he is, he's got his eyes on that one. Yes, we're aware that they're moving a lot of dirt, and, and we're making sure that they're gonna, you know, proceed accordingly with moving all of that.
Okay, because I know that they haven't moved a lot of sand in the front, they were supposed to plant trees.
Right.
That sand that is.
Yes. Yes. Mm-hmm, yeah, they, they will definitely have to bring all of those items to fruition with, with their special use permit. I believe they just have a little bit more time with the phasing and with the approval process, but I can look into that and give you a definitive deadline if you'd like.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Hey, that was actually, I'm sorry. Another problem with that is that was an active sand mining operation, and so the permit hasn't expired in the sand mining, so they're allowed to move a lot of dirt around. It is a project that we're keeping an eye on, and we did have them install the straw mats to try to solidify that area, but we're, from the county soil erosion standpoint, not very happy with it, but there's little we can do due to the fact that it was a sand mining operation and their permit hasn't expired yet.
When does the permit expire, do you remember?
I believe it expires in 2026, but that is a guess, but it could have been 2024, so. Regardless, they should, because of their phasing and completion of the project, that activity will cease, so they're looking to stabilize it, that's why you're seeing the straw mats in there.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I got a quick question. It wasn't on your presentation, about the dumpster enclosures.
Mm-hmm.
Was it every business that needed to have a dumpster enclosure in the city?
Yes.
And the deadline was?
Yes, I think that due to staffing and capacity, we've been, you know, struggling a little bit with determining how exactly that enforcement is going to happen, but it is still on our radar. I did actually meet with China Buffet today as well, so yes, it's something that's coming, but ultimately enforcement, you know.
That wasn't the one I was gonna ask you about, but I was just curious, because I, I seen another one today, and I, I just wasn't sure if it was every business or if it was just certain ones.
Yeah, it should be every, really every business with a dumpster visible from a public roadway.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Now it's time for comments and concerns and comments. Citizen comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on municipal services, activities, areas of city involvement. Citizens in attendance shall be recognized by the mayor for comments limited to five minutes. Letters submitted to council will not be publicly read. Hearing none. Officials on stand. Mr. Gamble.
Thank you, Mayor. Last night, we had our Quincy Neighborhood Meeting about the Quincy-Cleveland Project. We had 15 residents attend. Appreciate Spicer's work and DPW Director Jeff McCula's work. It was a good event with good participation, lots of questions, discussion, so, yeah, I think it was a very good event and well-attended. The other, I received the cost proposal for the PFAS investigation over at the landfill. I received it late this afternoon, so gonna be reviewing it. In our plan, we talk about starting it fairly soon in the fall, so we'll see something in October, probably first meeting in October, some action. I'll be working with the finance director to see how we fund it, but it's a large amount, so. Thank you.
Was it large, much larger than what we anticipated or thought it might be?
So we're, we're gonna review the cost proposal, but it's, it's significant.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all, thank you.
Mr. Saylor.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Ms. Paffley.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Mr. McCula.
Just one thing, Memorial Drive was open to traffic today, so we're very happy about that, and hope you take a ride through and check it out.
Thank you. City engineer.
Nothing, Your Honor.
City fire chief.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Police chief.
I'm letting you take a hard thing.
I'm gonna start the other one. Mr. Grabowski, anything?
Jeff, did you ever check into a camera for those sewers like we talked about before?
Like I've said in the past, we've looked into them before, but we only have the usage maybe once or twice a year, if that, and when we do need that, we contract out for that locally. And if you remember through the Saw Grant, we've got 80% of our sewer lines, sanitary sewer lines televised.
Right, I remember that. Okay.
Mr. Bachman.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Sandra.
I was just gonna say that I went to the Hops and Props this past week, and it was really great to see the beautiful day right on the river there, and just makes me proud to be in this town.
Mr. Shemansky.
Just wanted to say thank you for the great job. I think that our Planning Commission has been doing over the last year, they've been working really hard. A lot of innovative things have happened in the city, and a lot of that is due to their diligence and, and their focus, and again, I think we're very fortunate to have the team that we do. Second, just a question, do we have a date for the paving down in Maxwell Town with all the road construction, reconstruction?
We don't have a date, but right now they're grading all of the roadways for curb and gutter, and we expect the curb and gutter to, I, did she say end of the whist week? So the contractor should be here end of this week and do all the curb and gutter, and then right after, do all the curb approaches and driveway approaches, and then typically the contractor puts the topsoil in, but paving should be within the next few weeks.
Before winter, that's great.
Oh, absolutely.
That's kind of what people are concerned about.
Yeah. Interestingly enough, the city manager talked about Quincy Street, and we informed those residents that there's a, that they should not expect pavement this winter, that it will likely be gravel. There's a small upper, small chance that they get all the piping done in time before November 15th, and we can get it based in, but their comment was gravel's better than what we have now, so we'll take it.
And a nice job on Veterans Memorial Drive, what a great improvement for the community.
Thank you.
Long, long time coming, so glad to have done.
Thank you.
I just, thank you for getting the cement poured at the rec center. It seems like everything that could go wrong getting that building over there, like.
Are you telling me it's sandspired?
Yeah. Everything, like, was stacked against the get-go to get that done. It's finally gonna be.
Is the new building there now?
Not yet, they just poured the concrete today.
Okay.
And I did think that they were gonna pour it because it was raining this morning, so.
They got a little wet, but.
It's almost, almost there, so, and a huge, huge, Jim and Kathy for donating.
Go ahead.
I've been kind of on a bandwagon here, and I'm kind of hearing some not-too-nice comments. I've asked about the $2 and having a meeting on that. Found a nice article in the Record Ego about rational for raises and who should consider, who is paying the bill. I think you saw guys out on the highways the other day doing different things. They've been out on broken mains, and I said about their inflation the way it is, and I think I've asked for a meeting and I have heard nothing, and I think we need to talk about this. You know, and I've heard the comments made that I should just shut up and forget about it, but I'm not going to, so I'd like to have a meeting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll schedule a meeting, Councilman. Thank you.
You have anything else? Nope, okay. All right. I don't have anything else, but I will certainly echo that Hops and Props was a great success. We had a good time down there. Spent a lot of time talking about thoroughbred, so that was fun. Moving along, now we're gonna move to consideration of a closed session, the manager annual evaluation. City manager William Gamble has requested a closed session this week, as permitted by the Open Meetings Act, Section 8A, for discussion on the city manager's evaluation. At this time, council could take action to proceed to a closed session under Section 8A of the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Will call.
Councilmember Bachman.
Yes.
Mayor Beaton.
Yes.
Councilmember Lundberg.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sullivan.
Yes.
Councilmember Shemansky.
Yes.
Councilmember Grabowski. Councilmember Martin Pontiac.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Do we return all the evaluations?
Give me one second here. Okay, so we're now back in open session.
If you wanted to talk about that dumpster now, then this would be a better time, too.
Is there anything?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay.
Actual meeting.